Please stand, we'll stand for the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. First, we'll move to approval of the minutes of the meeting held March 8th, 2021. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion in second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. That carries. I should acknowledge that Todd Tulkey, board member, is unable to, he's out of town and is unable to attend the meeting, so we are down to four this evening. We didn't have anybody, I believe, to address the board, so we'll move on to both of those. We'll go to approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. That carries. Onto the good news report, Deanne.
Well, good evening. Motivational speaker Robert Brown says, "If you can speak, you can influence, and if you can influence, you can change lives." Washington High School senior Rahil Magosha can speak, and she is well on her way to changing lives. Rahil won the South Dakota Poetry Out Loud competition a week ago when she competed virtually as one of the seven finalists in South Dakota. Her talents and statewide win will now allow her to compete virtually at the national level against winners from each U.S. state. The top prize for that, if she were to win, which of course we hope she does, is $20,000.
That's awesome.
Yeah, awesome. Her teacher, Michelle McIntyre, is here to tell you a little bit more about Rahil, and then we will hear from Rahil.
Hi, thank you for having us. Rahil Magosha is a senior at Washington High School. I've had the privilege of coaching Rahil over her four years of high school on our oral and TARP squad, and she's just had many successes at that level, as well as with Poetry Out Loud. This year, for Poetry Out Loud, she submitted videos of three poems that she did extensive research to kind of understand the writers and the intent of the poem, and then she crafted her recitation in a way that impressed those people who chose her to represent South Dakota. So she is here with us today to share a sample of those performances.
All right. So again, I'm Rahil Magosha, I'm the person getting these 15 minutes of fame, I suppose. And for Poetry Out Loud, I did, I did three poems, all of different like categories. One of my choosing, one that was pre-twentieth century, and one that was 25 lines. The poem I'll be performing for you guys today is called "I'm Learning to Abandon the World" by Linda Paston. I'm learning to abandon the world before it can abandon me. Already I've given up the moon and snow, closing my shades against the claims of light. And the world has taken my father, my friends. I have given up melodic lines of hills, moving to a flat, tuneless landscape. And every night, I give my body up, limb by limb, working upwards across bone towards the heart. But morning comes with small reprieves of coffee and birdsong. A tree outside the window with the simply shadow moments ago takes back its branches, twig, a leafy twig. And as I take my body back, the sun lays its warm muzzle on my back, as if to make amends. Thank you.
Rahil, thank you so much. That was beautiful, and you're just an inspiration. We, we've all had a difficult year, and when we see students like you and being able to do these things now and competing and representing our school district, we really, really appreciate it, and thank you to your teacher as well. I know there is probably extra time involved in getting her ready for the competition and so forth, so greatly appreciate all your work on that, and what a representation you are. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And good luck.
Yes, good luck.
And good luck.
May 2nd, okay. Best of luck. Thank you. Onto conflicts of interest. There were no new conflicts presented, I believe, so we'll move on to approval of the consent agenda, items 9A through H. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion in second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. That carries. Onto the supplemental consent agenda, item 10A, 1 through 4. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Quick question. I have, oh, we're just doing A1 through 4.
Yep.
Okay, sorry.
Yep, second.
Okay, I have a motion in a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. That carries with three yeses and one abstention from board member Ryder. Onto 10B, 1 through 2. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion in second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. That carries with three yeses and one abstention from board member Parker. Onto the reports of the superintendent, Dr. Boyce.
Good evening. Tonight, I bring you the ELA Minor Study and Review of Curriculum to be adopted and implemented in the fall of 2021. The English Language Arts curriculum follows District Priority Area 1 student outcomes, and that the Sioux Falls District will provide a rigorous, effective, and engaging curriculum and instruction for all students to emphasize growth and reduce the achievement gap. The Sioux Falls District maintains a curriculum review cycle that is in alignment with the development of the adoption of the revised state standards. The English Language Arts curriculum is aligned with the South Dakota English Language Arts Literacy Content Standards and approved by the State Board, and the last adoption from the state of South Dakota was August of 2018. The ELA Minor Study began in the fall of 2019 as a K-12 Steering Committee reviewed the current programming standards and the South Dakota standards and current trends and best practices. The ELA Minor Study provides an opportunity to determine if the adjustments or changes are needed to their curriculum with a focus on reading interventions. One of the Sioux Falls District's strategic goals is for all students to read at grade level by the end of 3rd grade. For those students not at grade level, the district offers a reading intervention program that includes interventions for elementary, middle, and high school students. The Steering Committee followed the established K-12 ELA current philosophy and goals as part of that study. And when we look at those Language Arts curriculum goals for our, for the work, we wanted to make sure our students could demonstrate independence, build strong knowledge, respond to various demands of, for the audience, the task, the purpose, academic discipline. We wanted to make sure comprehension was there. We wanted for the students to be able to find, evaluate, and use evidence, and then technology and digital media strategically and capably to understand others' perspective and cultures. And so those were our goals as we began that study two years ago, and we're finishing that up, and we'll bring forward the recommendations for you, and we'll show you how that aligns with the materials that were purchased and implemented two years ago, and just that nice support system. And again, this was really focused on interventions and how do we fill the gaps that weren't there. So we'll look at that elementary, and when we look at the elementary, what we found through visiting with teachers and looking at assessment data, that we were really lacking in phonemic awareness and phonics at all levels, and just really to support those students and fill those gaps. So in the primary grades, junior kindergarten through kindergarten, we're going to look at learning letter names and Hagerty, and I'll explain a little bit more on that. And intermediate grades, it's guided spelling, book and book clubs. And first, elementary, special services, special education, we'll use Hagerty and SIPs. So we have nice alignment there. And you can look at this chart here, and everything in black is what was adopted during that last implementation. So being a reader, being a writer, and making meeting, we're all, they're all part of collaborative literacy. And then we went back and looked at the need in kindergarten and junior kindergarten, because that we didn't have when we did the last adoption. Learning letter names is part of collaborative literacy, and it's a component that we were using informally. And so this just strengthens that piece for our junior kindergarten and kindergarten classrooms. Guided spelling was not, it's a part of collaborative literacy, but we were using Words Their Way. And Words Their Way requires me as a teacher to run individual groups, so I could have five spelling groups within my classroom. Guided spelling is whole class instruction, so it allows me to do that. It follows my curriculum with being a reader, and then we can just go through, and I can do one lesson instead of having to do five. And so that will support our teachers and our students and fill in those gaps that we're missing. The word study workbooks is a new purchase, but we were using the digital version of that for 2nd grade, and the teachers were running copies. And so it's wise use of teachers' time and our resources to purchase the workbooks, and the digital copy wasn't as robust as we needed it to be. Hagerty phonemic awareness for junior kindergarten, kindergarten and 1st grade is really 19 lessons, and it's a strong focus right at the beginning of the year to infuse that phonics for those kids right as they get started, and allow us to jump into being a reader right away, because those students need those skills to be able to start and set one in being a reader. And we say it's SIPs, it's like drinking out of a fire hose. They just infuse it, and that'll give them that strong push. And then book clubs at grades 3, 4, and 5, and those grades, we're saying we need something a little bit stronger, beefier, and book clubs will do that and provide the supports for our students and our staff, and we're going to hold off on implementation with that until January. So all of these things can get started at the beginning of the year, and they will have their PD the first three days of school on all of these components, and then the touch points through the year with the district, the director called meetings, and the district PD times. And the best, and then we have special services and EL are, will use SIPs and Hagerty too. So there we have that alignment, that we're talking the same language, and that's that specialized instruction. So it brings that next piece, and we have, the SIPs, it was always there, but there's a specialized instruction component that they will use in the special education classroom that we won't use with the rest of the group. So then that is that extra boost that those students need if they have an IEP. And that's elementary. We move on to middle school, and middle school, the new materials is Newzella, and that is a support text for a variety of reading levels. So really, it provides access to all our students, so it doesn't matter if I'm reading at a 3rd grade level or a 12th grade level. I get informational texts at my level, and we can all be reading the same article, but that article is at my reading level. And so it really is an access issue for students. And then Lit Zone will, will purchase the rewards program for them, and Lit Zone has not had it a curriculum before. And so this will provide that curriculum for those Lit Zone teachers, and that cohesion amongst all buildings. And special services, they're purchasing Equip for Reading Success, and what that is, is it's a support for the teachers. So in the classroom, or in System 44, Read 180, all of a sudden, student Teresa has a gap that she needs filled. I can go grab a lesson from that, give that intense instruction, and then they can jump back into the program. So it really is, it's an intervention for the teacher to help support that. And you can see here, this is, again, everything that was purchased with the last adoption And then special education, again, supplemental texts to help support special education and EL students. And EL is part of our World Language Study, and that will come, it will start next fall. And so then we'll really look at that English Language Development curriculum as we move through that to see what other supports we need in there. So that, and it was addressed in the last study in 2017, so moving forward too. Part of the purchases that you see in the board report were to extend licenses, because since we did the minor study, we moved this out, so our next implementation won't be until the fall of 2026. And 500,000 of that purchase was to extend licenses until that time. So that's part of that adoption there. So, and, and then with everything, we have large committee meetings. When you think of elementary, middle, and high school, we had teachers from each level. We had special education teachers, EL teachers, counselors, librarians, instructional coaches, of course, parents on that committee, and community members. And so all groups, stakeholders involved in that process for that two-year, we start with our Steering Committee. That first year, set the goals and the priorities. Second year, we really bring in the groups to start looking at the curriculum, to meet the standards, and then the writing that goes along with that. So in summary, the K-12 Minor Study provided an opportunity to review current programming, student outcomes, and professional learning to determine if adjustments or changes are needed with a special focus on reading[1077.78][1077.81]interventions. As outlined, the purchase curriculum will support the common pedagogy between Tier 1, 2, and 3 instruction with a foundation in the science of reading. Science of reading targets research-based practices that focus on foundational skills and language acquisition as a means to reading comprehension. Now with that, I'll stand by for any questions, and then ask for approval on that curriculum adoption.
I'll turn my mic back on. Thank you, Dr. Boyson, for the public and so forth. So our curriculum studies, we have them all listed on our website, so you can see what, when each subject will be addressed as a district. And we, it's basically a seven-year cycle, and that's why she was talking about 2026 versus 20, we have a minor one for ELA, which we don't do a minor report for other subjects. So this was the first one we've done that for. Is that correct?
It really was. And when we looked at the state revised their review cycle, and so we wanted to make sure we were in alignment. And then also, it's, it's one of the expensive adoptions, and so how could we spread that out? And the interventions, we knew we needed to take time to really dive into, and that, this provided that opportunity.
What I like about that we're doing this at this time, too, is that we, you know, this has been part of our strategic plan, is having our readers at third grade be great, at grade level, and we've not been able to move that needle. So this has allowed us to do another deep dive into what might work and not work, and what adoptions we might need to address as a district. So I think you'll see in the budget coming up at our work session, March 31st, some other components that will help with that, the ELA and SIPs and so forth like that, so.
That's right.
Just a quick question on the high school, the diverse texts that were purchased. Were those mostly like, or will they be classroom sets, or is this for the library itself for people to check out?
Yeah, come on. That's why we have them.
Yeah. Or maybe it's digital. I mean, I think there's so many options, and I'm just curious.
Good question. Thank you, Carly. So there are some novels that will be whole class sets, and then there are other choices that will be used for lit circles. But they're all texts that will be used in the classroom.
Okay.
It's separate from novels that would be purchased for the libraries.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, and I think in the details of your report, I think it's, it is so important to, when we can, look at the texts that we're reading, because just like any of us that might go to the library, you know, we pick out a book that's maybe new, and it's addressing a new topic. And if you think about the things that are on the news lately is with the diversity issues and conflicts and, and good conversations, I think it's so important that we teach our students how to have those conversations and make those observations, and be able to have healthy conversations with their classmates. And so getting those texts in their hand for them to really think about and explore, and have a safe place to talk about that and really learn from others is so important. So I'm glad to see that that was really part of that high school selection process for getting those materials in our classrooms.
Other questions?
Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve the recommended grades K through 12 English Language Arts curriculum adoption?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. That is approved. Thank you, Dr. Boyson. Nothing new here, right?
Hmm? So the main run of the legislature is over. We have one day left. It's next Monday. It's veto day. So we're just going to give you a quick wrap-up of the bills we tracked and the budget, those interesting things. First of all, we always, since the accountabilities of 2017, all passed in 2016, but for the fiscal year 2017, we've kind of been tracking what the state budget has done and what, what we've done as well. So this year, the targeted teacher salary increased 2.4%. State law, the 3% inflation, whichever is less, would have been about 1.5%, so that was nice. The state also amended the current year's budget bill to help schools with $11 million statewide for enrollments coming in, much lower than you would normally have expected due to COVID. That's going to be about 1.9 million for our school district. I think the rapid, yeah, the biggest number was about 2.1, I think, if I remember right. So just to compare our increase to the rest of the state, the total state budget went up 4.3%, general fund. The target teacher salary, 2.4%. Total state aid funding, because there's growth in, projected growth in students, 3.3%. Medicaid agencies, DSS and DHS went up 6.4%. And all the rest of state government, everything else, that's not state aid or Medicaid agencies, or the technical schools, because they're not a state entity, that went up 3.2%. So here's some comparisons, then going back to the first year of the, have sent sales tax in our baselines for our salaries and whatnot. The percent of the general fund, we were 33.1% in 2017. Schools are 33.2% now, so basically held even. Medicaid agencies not, surprisingly, are up a little bit, and the rest of state government is down a little bit. The budgeted increase since 2017, the targeted teacher salary, the average annual increase has been 1.6%, so cumulative over that period of time is 8.5%. Since so much of our budget is, the state, the general fund budget is salaries and benefits, I try to compare it to something that might be comparable item, and the state personal services per FTE budget. So the FTE will grow with, with the needs, but the amount per FTE, the average annual increase is in the budgeted amount from 17 to 22 is 2.4%. The, you know, and that adds up, that eight tenths of a percent difference adds up, it's 12.1. But if you, if you watch that budget, you'll know that the salaries and benefits and the FTE are never, the budgeted number is never the actual number. So we also watch what, what the actual has done, so you can get a real, a real look at that. So it lags for two years, so that that's only a three-year statistic on there, but that average annual is 3.2. And then if you assume that for the five-year period, we're measuring everything else against, it's 17. So basically twice the rate of increase as the targeted teacher salary has gone up. And then, of course, we tracked other education-related bills too, and not just the two, the budget bills. We tracked 36. We supported eight of, opposed 14, and then others we didn't have a position on or had amended. Eight of them were key bills. Eight of the other ones were key bills. The green, as we do in our document, greens are bills that didn't make it through. The blues, the blue bills are the two that passed. Just to go quickly through those, House Bill 1050 was the newspaper legal notices bill requiring us to put a sentence on there saying you can get it online, get it online. That failed. House Bill 1097 was a philosophical exception bill for vaccines. We oppose that. That failed. Honor songs at graduation ceremonies, 1108, that failed. House Bill 1121, on an amendment, where BOA would host local government minutes on their website. Our amendment that we would have liked on there was that they will, we can just put in the paper that that's out there, and we don't have to print our whole minutes in there, just a notice saying that that's out there. That didn't go anywhere, that bill. House Bill 1129 was, had some public live stream requirements that were quite onerous, so we oppose that. That died. House Bill 1217, it's called the Fairness in Women's Sports Act. That passed, but there's been a style and form veto, and that'll be taken up next Monday. Senate Bill 170 would prohibit physical exams without the express consent of the parent, and that's even for some very minor, minor exams. We oppose that. That bill failed. And then SB 177, we oppose. That one passed. It's lessons, homeschool accountability requirements, and then it also guarantees homeschool kids can compete in athletics or activities. That bill passed. So that is a quick update. I stand by for questions, and...
Parents are their child's first teachers.
Approve the, or just acknowledge the report. Thanks.
Thank you to Brett and your team, Todd, for tracking all these bills. And I know it keeps you busy during the session, but it's great for us how you update us and how it's on the website for our public to kind of know what our position is. I mean, when we had our breakfast with the legislators, they commended all of you for what a good job you do, because it's, it's very out there, that people can just go click on it and see what our position is and what our reasoning is. So greatly appreciate that work you guys do for us.
That's a team effort. A lot of people contribute to that.
Any other questions, Dr.?
I have a lot of questions, but they're not for you.
Yeah, we'll see what Monday brings.
Exactly, exactly. Seeing none, approve the legislative update.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. That is approved. For the good of the board, I would just like to congratulate the Washington girls' state basketball champions last week, about two weekends ago now. And this weekend, Roosevelt Boys are the champions, and Washington received fourth place. And so very exciting for the district for those activities. And once, our school board election, still April 9th is the deadline for petitions, and May 18th is the election. So reach out to Bev if you have any questions. She's awesome. So anything else for the good of the board? Seeing none, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.